Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
All right, Paul, we need to order at six o'clock on April 4th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the town hall upstairs. Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved. Sorry.
Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have the minutes of March 21st to approve. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
I have an addition, please, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Under number eight, believe.
Number what?
Number eight, committee reports.
Yes.
And specifically under personnel community harassment training. I had to refresh my own memory on this. It turns out we made a motion. John made the motion, Kathy seconded it. We had a vote for one not to do the harassment training.
Oh, okay.
That's in the take, just.
Yeah. I'm sorry to miss that, yeah.
So, yeah. Thank you, Bill.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes of March 21st? If not, somebody make a motion to approve that the minutes of March 21st as amended?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, Danny, you're on the first highway.
Oh, yeah, the open truck bids. Phil has the.
Okay, yeah, but. That's the only bid we have.
Is that the same guy?
It's.
Western Star?
Western Star. We sent it to six, six different companies.
Which lies no.
No, actually, why would you give me that? Come on. Let's fly. Please, let me apply there.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the bid.
All right.
You haven't read that just recently.
This is my first time reading this. Okay, so PTG Patriot LLC, do you want the requirements or how this is?
Just what we done. Danny, what do you know?
I don't know how they listed it out. I just read off the bid price for the truck. And then it should be separate numbers for warranty.
Okay.
To the 2003 Western car. Net sale price of chassis body equipment warranty package $175,414.
2003?
Twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-four. How much?
$175,414.
There should be a trade deal on it somewhere to look.
Yeah, read the first, the 200 number.
Yeah, we've got, truck is $145,77. The body is $87,950. Total sale price of $233,720. Trade allowance of $70,000. Then sale price of chassis is $163,720. Then the warranty is $11,694. And that's how they got the $175,414.
The warranty is included, definitely?
Yeah, $11,694.
$175?
$175,414.
Well, we're not going to approve this tonight, Danny. You need to look it over.
Just one bid?
That's it.
Hopefully, you know more about it than I do.
Did anybody send any letters back?
I got a letter back, I got an email back as soon as I sent it out from the straight man. Now, and he said that they weren't going to bid it because he wasn't out of the town.
Not happy are you with the trade-in?
No, not.
Like everything, all the numbers are listed, so for the cost stuff. Well, I mean, we, we sent it out to six different companies.
Okay, just, just for the record, it was in Vermont Journal. Randomly ranked 15 days. It was set to six dealers. I asked all of them if you're not going to bid to write back. One of them did. And I'm pretty sure it was Straight Ritter. And I talked to another on the phone and he said he probably wasn't going to bid. Yes, he doesn't really do new trucks anyway. And so I got those reactions, but I got one back that they didn't want to. But I sent it to six and we put it in the newspaper and we only got one bid.
What did Blue Buck say about that, Jeff?
I don't know. They had a blue book on. Because every, every big truck is set up different with bodies and everything. I've never seen where they list the blue book.
Did you expect this truck not the same as the other?
It's backed out as close as we can to our existing trucks. I believe that is with an automatic.
What was the trade-in?
$70,000.
That truck doesn't have a warranty, you're right.
No. We just got it back from ATG last week when they did a front spring steering pump. And you joint the front pump while they're down there and it gets $3,700 just for that.
What's the year of that truck?
2016.
Any other question, the comments on the truck? All right, Danny, go ahead. Who can do the FEMA, your job or Danny?
The FEMA, we didn't have a meeting this week. She's working on the stockpiles that Michelle sent to her. So there's no really any update on that. She thought that she needed to have a meeting this week. Did any?
We did give back debt amount for the bridge on Ledgo. A estimate amount that we gave to FEMA, just so that they would know what, what we're talking about. And, but we have to send it out for bid before we know what it's really going to cost. But it's, it's expensive. What is it, $100?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
What, only $152?
$152.
Is that the Ledgo?
Yes.
Is that both of them?
Yes.
I think those are bridge.
I wish we could have gotten rid of that road, straightened it out, got rid of that, banned, got rid of that need for that covert. But, but Pinnacle Hill would not ban. They wanted us to go through all sorts of environmental things that would have been taking us forever. We finally decided, okay, we'll put the bridge back.
It's a box.
It's in a really bad place.
It's a box cover.
Okay. There is a bridge on Ledgo that's talking to get any.
The Fed aid highway, that's you, Bill, I guess? You put that on there.
Fed aid highway, we have for you to authorize a signature tonight. I gave you the first three pages. It looks like this. And that I gave you there, the first three pages. I sent you the entire 129 pages. I didn't want to print those out. But this is the meat of it. We spent about $70,000 fixing the 121, both the dirt and, and doing the brick wrap on the, on this end of it. And $70,000 and they're going to, we have an agreement for them that needs to be signed. I would ask you to authorize me to sign it. We can then send them again, all the bills and the paperwork. And if, and if I get it through them tomorrow, we can probably have this $63,000 by the end of the week, which is the cost of it. Megan's going away for two weeks and so is Mark. And so Megan's really passed with it. So if we get back to assuming, we might have the money right away.
I'll make a motion to authorize Bill to sign it.
Second. That's worth $63,000.
Well, leave it that way.
Any, any discussion? If not, all favor of the motion to have Bill sign. Agreement.
Agreement for.
For emergency repair. Say aye? Opposed? Phil?
We have authorization to sign. You want, you got, you got a read.
We have, Fleming, you, which one are you on?
You want, you have the original or you want one of these?
He has the original. Okay, let's start. We're at this together. Okay, this is the annual communal plan. This is on the back. This is already approved by B parent, we just need to sign it. That needs to be passed around and signed. And this is the certificate of compliance stating that we have current road and bridge standards that meet all the requirements of the state of Vermont. And more importantly, that we actually build to those standards. So that, they need that in order to allow us to contend to get grants from this next year. So that needs to be signed by them.
Both of them are done yearly.
We have the excess, Phil, you, you finished the dollars? I think so. Wait one second. With FEMA, yes, I am. But not the excess rate?
Yeah.
That says wait permits are from Jamie Gregory Trucking and Escavating, Lynn Gregory Environmental, DeSala Construction, Wilson and Lawrence, Beacon Sales out of some place in Indiana. I think that they're probably set up, sell those single wise, that they just haul through the place through different areas. That's why they want to have overweight permits in all the areas and quarter and quarter. Also, all I have with FEMA. Okay, we need a motion to accept those and have Bill sign the excess rate permits.
No.
Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we have anything else, Bill? Not on the agenda, but I think you had something on. Or do you do that under committee?
Under committee.
Under committee. Okay. There's no, there's nothing else. Everybody satisfied that we can move on? Danny have anything else? You have a tip, Danny?
Jeff Nugent was in today. He brought the iPad back with him.
Okay.
And the timesheet that we're, we use that on paper now, but he has it on Bill's computer and mine on the computer. So I'll start playing around using that. There's a lot of stuff today to take in. We have to start recording all of the connected segments for the state of Vermont because they haven't been done for a few years. And we're not doing that. We have to do it ourselves now. So we have to manage to plan catch up. You know, work's been done, but needs to be put onto the state's map and by the end of the year. So there'll be a lot of that to do. Prepare the work schedule.
We say end of the year. You mean Academy year or Alpha and Fiscale year?
By 2023, yeah, so we all recorded. At least 15% of all the high risk areas, which were probably at 90%, 98% of them being done, they're just not recorded to the state. And even the grants and aid that was used for a lot of them projects, the state has all that information, but they haven't even plugged any of them in. And they have to do that part of them. So they're a little bit behind on the recorded part.
So are you going to do that?
I am going to start with it. There's a lot of information I'm going to, anyone knows it. And then as Kim and I thought, we might actually print out, there's three pages for every segment that you have to fill out. So I may end up in the end printing out them three pages and putting information on. So Bill can do a bunch of them. Segment is 328 feet long. We have 48 miles of road. That's one side of the road. So it does two sides. So there's a lot of segments to report.
So because this is a requirement, this is not something that you can attend it, that you know.
We have to do it. Once it's all caught up, then you do it, you know, as you're doing the projects. You can do it, as you showed us, on a laptop and on the tablet or iPad. I can do it right on there. So you literally, when you're all done with it, you could take the pictures and do all that stuff right there. I think once you do it enough, you could probably fill out a segment in, you know, five, six minutes. I think it'd be really fast. But they get used to it and you go through and answer all the questions. You're just checking the box and finding the segments. And you got to put the segment numbers with each one of them.
I just want to reiterate what he said. We have done the work. It's done. We're way ahead of the rest of the state. If you talk to anybody, we're way ahead of the rest of the state in getting it done. And we thought somebody else was entering that data as we sent it in. As it turns out, no one is doing it. And, and so it came back this year. We don't, we have like 1% of our work done. We're, like Danny said, 90% done. And so it's just a matter of putting it, but I just want to reiterate, the work is done. We just had a documentation we have for the end of December of this year to do the documentation.
Work schedule, hopefully this week doesn't look too good for doing any more grading. It's raining Wednesday on. Do a little bit more tomorrow. And after that, I'd be just cleaning up some of the winter at the end of the week. So that's done. And hopefully starts drying out. So we start ditching and doing some of the grants and aids projects, get started on them.
Anything else with the highway problem? Kim?
I don't have anything unless somebody else has something, you have any questions for me.
Okay, we move on to committee reports. The cemetery committee, you want to deal with that, John, because you, you talked to. The Sexton. Boston.
Boston.
Yeah, we, we think, I think we had a Sexton that day.
I think we do. At the last meeting, we appointed bridge temporary Sexton of the cemetery. But in the meeting, well, since then, Austin Powers, that's the last name. We thought of him and asked him if he'd be interested. He seems interested in doing it. He worked for Walter for a couple of years and probably knows a little bit about it. And with the help of him, he could probably manage doing the Sexton job. So I, do we have to appoint him tonight, Phil?
I would, I would, he's ready. And if you're ready to appoint, I think he would be a person to point. I think Kim may have some input on that too, because she, she talked to him. She might want to go to drive.
We, we talked. She's definitely about it, ready to go. He's actually played out all his paperwork and things you do appoint him. Very happy to work with me. I went into all of the paperwork and the mapping, he grew more or less. He gave permission to give out his name and number to individuals that should happen to call the office. He will take them up and show them to the plots that we approximately buy. He'll mark the spots and he'll take care of the cremation holes. He'd be totally happy to do it. Very happy that he doesn't have to tend to the actual lawn care of the law. And in the job description, I think you have a description for the Sexton that Bill and I had put together. And I think we took out one section of them, him overseeing the lawn care.
Yeah, the committee, the committee will, the committee will start reviewing cemeteries on a regular basis to make sure that they're being mowed properly, leaves are being picked up, branches and all that kind of stuff. So that'll be the, that'll be the responsibility of the cemetery committee to be guarding itself.
I'm sure Crystal, I would help him also.
Yeah, if he has any, I'm sure he's looking out for him. It's a career term. You did look at all the new cemeteries, Sexton, that you have for real time.
I think it's a great idea. And I hand it to you for thinking of Austin. One of the job descriptions is a good face to the town and he'll be wonderful in that. And then he's been tutored by Walter. It's a good thing.
So here's we need a motion to. Austin to the Sexton, as a Sexton. Can anyone make that motion?
I have a question on the description and I pose this to Bill about liability. And I think you guys are going to look into that, about liability issue.
Well, today I thought it was full moon out, so we didn't get around to everything you need to get to Kim and I. But that was one of the things she, he, he was on, he'll be on the liability, like, like Don Lawrence was on our liability, right?
He's liable, just like he would anybody that is working under the Town of Craft.
Workers' Comp.
He's not appointed, so I have to check that. I want to say that, but I can't imagine.
Well, we're paying him a strike and so he would be.
Pardon?
We're paying him, so I would think he would be on the town.
I posed and I gave you a couple of examples. If he's showing the property or a plot and the person falls, gets hurt. Or he shows a plot and it's the wrong one and someone's buried there. That's liability and stopping that. Is that covered?
Okay, what I think you should do is make it part of the motion, which there isn't a Sexton. To appoint him and to be sure that the town covers it in the workers' comp.
I think you're saying a bit.
I'm saying workers' comp.
Workers' comp. I'm talking about he's, he's showing a person a plot. He's showing the.
We have liability on all the property.
Okay, but just one issue, cover.
Right, we have liability. If somebody got. Did somebody picture?
Even if somebody that doesn't work for the Town of Craft, you should get a warrant on the property, you see that liability.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, showing, showing a plot and selling him what was stayed. I mean, you just would rectify the problem. There's, I mean, who's going to sue us for a small plot of land?
I'm just doing the what is.
Yeah.
Covering the bases, covering that.
I mean, I don't know what happened since I've been here 15 years. Maybe it has, I don't know. But I guess.
We do have maps. I mean, it's, I don't say they're 100%, but I mean, there are maps of each city. So.
They make a mistake.
Also, I believe that these cemeteries in the funeral homes also, they usually prove even for who's going to do it.
Okay, so you want to make the motion, Kathy?
Well, yeah, I make a motion to appoint Austin Powers as Sexton. And you just post that with the job description as it's written?
Yeah. Oh, no, you're not. No? You haven't approved the job description that I know. You know, I have it like here. Okay, so. You're going to take out, you're going to take out overseeing the contract. Right. And I sent that to all of them, but I had known it made a motion.
Well, so we can make a motion and do the whole thing right now. Point him and the job description. As amended.
Make a motion to appoint Austin Powers as Sexton with Craft and Cemeteries along with the job description.
But as, you want to say as amended, Bill, or as presented? Because. As presented, because I presented it to you without this or a record.
As presented.
Will you second?
Second.
Any other concern or discussion about the Sexton or Austin? If not, everybody in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, highway.
I have some things. The first is Walker Bridge. The whiteaways were sent out to the four landowners with how much they were going to give each one. And I don't have the individual prices, but the total was 14, around $14,000. That amount will probably change because the landowners, all of them will probably not accept what was given to them. So as of now, that's what it is, $14,000.
And so what happens if they, if they don't want to take it?
They can, they can come up with one. They think it's worth and submit it to B parent and then to their court whether they accept that.
And if they don't accept it, what happens? Pays the difference.
If, if they don't accept that, then they will take it.
Oh, okay.
And eventually they will pay it. At some time, the price will be at, you can't go up or down with it.
So that's $14,000 divided by the.
Four, but they're not equal.
Oh, that's a common.
That's a common. I don't, I don't know what anybody's rules. But I think they had in there a bunch of $50,000 for the whiteaway.
How much?
$50,000.
I think it was 40.
40.
Yeah.
My second thing is, I guess, I'll go Middletown Road mud season. And before I make any comments on it, maybe Sam or Lisa would like to enlighten everybody here as to their concerns that they have.
Yeah, well, the first thing I want to compliment Danny at his crew is by no means a reflection on that. They've been a wonderful job. But Middletown Road is, everybody knows it's traveled this year. Horrible. It still has some rough spots. The problem I see happening, and I've witnessed this a number of times, people coming from the village, not familiar with the road, take Middletown Road and for their first maybe 300 yards, it's paved. So they think nothing does them. They got past that paved part, they get into the dirt and the mud, they can't turn around. Most of them, plots broke, some get stuck, some swerve off the road. And I saw the white knuckle and I see somebody coming towards me, you know, zigzagging. Actually, you got a pickup truck. I don't even think, you know, a front wheel drive is useless and some of the small, old, little cars don't make it out of the ground there. So it's the entire road, it goes from spot to spot. What I would like to say, if it's possible, some kind of warning, you know, during the mud season, maybe during a heavy snowstorm or something like that, that the road somehow is compromised and people should take a 121. It's, it's becoming dangerous. I think we had one accident there this, this mud season and we had numerous people stuck, I've noticed. And I had one instance where a tow truck wouldn't even go there. They told me because they're afraid to get stuck in it. So I think we could put some kind of sign, whether it's temporary or permanent, to tell people this road is a dirt road or muddy road or a hazardous road during the mud season and take an alternative 121. And I leave that up to you folks, how you want to handle that. But I think there should be some kind of warning there, telling the people, take another loop or don't take it at all if you have a two-wheel or front-wheel drive car or rear-wheel drive car.
Yeah, but I didn't say.
Yep, and not necessarily related to the mud season situation, but as we mentioned in our letter, there was that case of the 18-wheeler that was on its way to Chicago and following its GPS and goes up Middletown Road and goes down the hill by Daddy's house and is unable to turn left on the bridge and gets stuck there. And of course, to exacerbate the situation, there's no telephone connection there. So this driver was stuck there and was looking around, where do I go to make a phone call to reply to this? And I happened on the scene. It was on a winter night. I happened on the scene and I found the driver walking on the road, looking for some house where they could make a phone call. And it took three hours till the special tow truck that had to be ordered came, I think by 11:00, was there and I was able to winch the trailer slowly so the truck was able to make the turn. And during that time, mercifully, nothing happened. But if we had an emergency at the western end of town, no vehicle was able to get through. Road was blocked. There was, there was no way of getting there. And we did notify, I called 911 and, and told state police that we have a situation. State police came and, but you know, what can they do? So it was a three-hour situation where the road was blocked. And again, if there was a sign at each end of Middletown Road, something like no through trucks or local traffic only or whatever. trucks or local traffic only or whatever, I think this driver would have said, oh no, my GPS says I go that way, but I can't go that way, so there's the other road. Um, so that's not specific about mud season, but mud season, of course, is a special time when that kind of a thing should not happen.
Got a question, Danny. What is the low limit on that bridge?
There are a few ratings, so there's no.
That York Six had eighty thousand pounds.
And it's fine.
So you've got that bridge?
If the bridge has got a restriction, there'd be a sign on the bridge that says there's a restriction.
So, okay, because I thought that truck was kind of big for that, looking at that bridge.
I'll go with some bridges that have a certain rating on, they don't meet the requirement like Fisher Hill Bridge, that has a sign that states what the load of them is. But I'll comment on it. So you have many roads that are through roads, people use as shortcuts. Eastman, Fisher Hill, State Road. We have the same problems with people that either aren't very good drivers or don't pay attention. We've got tractor trailers stuck on the village bridge down here.
Yeah.
We have signs on Parker Hill that say no through traffic, dead end road. We have one at the end now that says stop here. It turns into a four-wheeler trail. We have FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, everything going through Burgess Cemetery off of thirty-five. Same thing, you go to the cemetery, anybody with common sense, when they pitch up there and look down, do, wouldn't keep going. They've had BMWs down in there, stop.
The village.
So like, you can spend a lot of money on signs, put them up. They're not even reading, um, you know, but you can buy a sign, a biroll, roll-up sign that could be put out during mud season that says no through traffic, residents only, whatever. About a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars a piece. Um, but if you put up a sign, a permit sign, that says, you know, residents only, no through traffic, I've already heard many comments that all these other through roads that get used much more. Eastman Road is, it's like a ninety-one down through there. It's a shit cutoff from Grafton to one oh three. Fisher Hill, the backside of Fisher Hill was absolutely impassable, going downhill, and people still would go downhill. It's a nice thought to put a sign up. A lot of your offenders, I hate to say it, but are local people. It, it's the truth. We see it all the time on the roads. Um, a lot of people run up over to Middletown, just especially in the summer, seen it bright. Um, like one twenty-one gets a little bit rough, that's the shortcut. But we have it in many different areas, Cambridge Fort Road, you know, so.
Well, right now, Danny, you have in Pinkley Brook, get people going up there because the frost hasn't come out and that's in real good shape. And then, and then what's going to happen to that shortcut when the frost?
The other problem is, is we can put all the signs up, same with our road posts and signs, we put them up, we cannot enforce them. We do not have the authority. We can put them up, you can see a truck come down through, we do not have the right to stop them. We call, we complain to the owners or different ones, but we are not, you know, it has to be like a DOT and DMV officer that enforces that. Even the sheriff and stuff, they can stop the big trucks, but they can't weigh them or anything like that. So there's a lot of, we spend a lot of money putting up signs that the honest person might, you know, read it, stay off, but I really think it's going to be a big expense to, to do the signs and then have multiple taxpayers come in wanting the same treatment on their roads, because we have so many through roads that are used like that.
Doesn't any person with a straight tire have any right to drive those roads anyway? It's not always. I mean, I guess the road is kind of a bypass road, but it's still a town road. I mean, I did exactly what he said, I drove through Middletown quite often, and one point one just went off of them. It was the same, you go on plan one, no more, there's plenty of much traffic going by their house, so I tear their road down. Fisher Hill, definitely was, Anderson Road, guaranteed was worse than Middletown.
Anderson Road was our worst road to shoot by.
I didn't go on.
It was, I don't know how them people were getting through them.
Some of them didn't.
No, they didn't.
Yeah, I've, I've been here a good many years and I don't remember a year that we didn't have mud season. And I'm sure we're going to have it every year, mud season, so most people get used to that. And some, sometimes it's worse than other years, but the town crew does its best to make it so that people can go through it. And I'm sure a lot of people try not to just go on the road to, you know, to ruin it. So I, I understand, you keep putting signs up and it gets to a point where it doesn't make any, any difference.
This was, you know, this mud season was a little bit more extreme than some in the past, you know, I've seen worse years, but I don't think we've ever had it quite so widespread so fast. You've always been, you know, a couple of roads here or there, you could fix them up and that would be good, and then you go. This year, you just kept going back to the same, continue spots up, you know, every time, so.
But the state said, those articles, that was the worst in forty years, or twenty years, I think it was, and it was statewide, so it was only, not only in Grafton at the issue of the, of the mud season. And just to say, Sam said it's about an accident, the accident on Middletown Road was by a resident.
A resident on.
If they used, that lives, lived right off Middletown Road.
I think as far as the permanent signs, if I saw one, I honestly, I wouldn't pay that much attention to it. If I saw a sandwich-type sign out there that said pass at your own risk, because it was the highway crew said, hey, you know, this is really getting bad, uh, impassable or whatever, or even emergency-type thing, then I can see some kind of a temporary sign out there. But, uh, yeah, if you put one out there, they put one on my hill too. And I actually kind of go by all of them.
So Rich, you're saying that you think a temporary sign might be more effective?
Well, I think it would catch people's attention a little more and, but even though, I mean, if it was one of those deals that, you know, Danny said, you know, we really, this road is impassable at this point, we're going to try to keep as many people off as possible, then I can see putting a sandwich-type sign out there.
But you, you'd have to do that for, for fifteen roads in town, because they were all.
Depending on the year. But I mean, if, I mean, accident, it's whatever you guys would like to do, we do, we gotta wait for the new budgets before we go ahead and sign. But they're, they're roughly around a hundred fifty.
I can, I can give you a firsthand, um, my experience with signs. Avery Park Drive is on the GPS. And, um, we had numerous people drive up and they went to the trail and they, they guess they, they realized it. But we had one person who went up there in his pickup truck and went in a mile, and it's a sign that says no motorized vehicles at this point. We had to hire Jamie Gregory to come in and hang, and get this guy out with his loader. So signs don't work, trust me, they don't work. And this had gone through a residential home and it still didn't work.
The very first night, excuse me, it wasn't the very first night, but one of the first nights that you guys put the COVID out in front of my house on the corner, someone drove up there, drove across my front field and out my driveway, you know? It's like, how in the hell could you possibly do that? Yeah? So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I hear Sam and Lisa, absolutely, I mean, it's tough and all that. I don't want to sit back and decide, it's gonna hold a heck of a lot either.
I, I, I think that if I saw a sandwich, the highway department put up.
No, we can't pay attention more.
This highway is impassable. It would be the same kind of thing to me if I saw, uh, one of the digital signs out on the highway that said there's an accident ahead, if you don't want to run into all the traffic, take a detour. I mean, I think that there are bad actors and there are going to be people who don't pay attention. I also think there are going to be good actors and people who do pay attention to the sign. And I understand that it's an exasperating situation to have people put up signs and they don't pay any attention to them. But I'm just wondering, Danny, is there any solution to this that you, that you can see that, that might work? What do you think of temporary signs?
Temporary signs, you know, as needed, but we need to, we have to work with some.
Bill? How many times have we closely worked when it was completely non-passable, only to go there to find a science move if somebody's stuck up at the end of the damn road? How many times? That year that we had the ice storm, three or four times. They don't pay attention to signs.
But some people don't. Do you, don't you think it's useful information for other drivers who do pay attention to the sign and don't go up Pinkley Brook Road and get stuck? I mean, I can't imagine that every driver doesn't pay attention to the sign.
We don't, I mean, you can do the temporary signs, but we don't want to get into putting that up and then have to put a detour sign up showing, you know, people. That's the, that's what it turns into.
Well, if, if it's a lot of locals who are the violators, let's say, on Middletown Road, the locals all know that they can take the lower road exactly the same length, the same amount of time, there's no hardship in taking, so that, that would certainly keep them off that road.
Well, maybe, I'm only, I can only hear every third word here, because of the blue sticks. Uh, maybe you've covered this already. Uh, what about something that's supportable? Something like sawhorses with a sign that can be moved from road to road. It could go to Middletown Road, it could go to Fisher Hill Road, it could go to Eastern Road. Uh, they can be moved around at, depending on the, on the seriousness of the situation you must.
That, that's good, that's the temporary signs.
Yeah, I can't understand which board.
Okay.
But you might have one point one goes down, send a D plus to Middletown.
We did a couple of years ago.
Oh, is that right? With what?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, this ways this year, you had them all at the same time. What do you have?
I wonder if we could entertain the idea of an experiment. Next time we have an impassable Middletown Road, we put a temporary sign up and see how it works.
Well, my question is to the board, what, what, what's your pleasure? What, what would you like to see done this fall?
I, I'd like to see something done with at least a temporary sign.
No, I mean, we need some kind of a motion of some sort to, to, to dress.
Well, I thought we were trying to reach a consensus.
Yeah, but I'm asking what ultimately, what is such what you'd like to see happen?
What is the highway committee's recommendation?
I, I don't think that we came up with any recommendation at all. I, I just think we've lived through this so many years and it's not caused any big problems that I know of. You're going to add that occasional truck that gets led on the wrong road or a car or this or that, but we don't have a lot of them. And you're going to have occasionally persons, but those are Middletown roads that shouldn't have gone Middletown, should have went one twenty-one and eight big blocks. So I just don't think it would make any action.
The consensus was when we were talking, whatever, small potatoes, whatever, we didn't really think it was going to help function if we put up a sign.
Can I ask a question, um, just for my information? If, uh, Middletown Road is not a state road, it is the town's jurisdiction, correct?
It's a class, it's a class two road, right?
Yeah.
A class three, sorry, class three road.
Class two, state aid, state, that's one of them.
So according to the sheriff with whom I discussed this, uh, the town has full power to post these ten-party signs without, it's, it's not a matter that requires any kind of authorization from state or the agency or the, is that correct?
None of our roads in the town of Grafton, we need permission from the state.
Yes.
They're all, they're all the state aid road. We get like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year from the state to help us with aid and taking care of all our roads. One twenty-one, Middletown, Main Street, they're all the same, they're all in the same. You have class two, class three, class two with black dollar. And the, the class three is just the dirt.
Yeah.
And they're all funded just through state aid.
Yeah.
Based off from our, um, financial plan for the budgets and stuff.
Yeah. So, so, um, let's, let's just think of a hypothetical, that, that you have a basically impassable road, um, which some person who is not familiar with the situation decides to take and gets totally stuck and damages the vehicle, is not able to get a tow truck to, the tow truck can't go there, so forth. Is there any liability on part of the town if it's within our jurisdiction?
Don't believe so.
If, if, if we knew as a town that this road is so bad, no through traffic should go through and there's an alternate road, can't they come to the town and say, why didn't you warn? Why didn't you put a warning sign?
Nobody's making them go.
Isn't that?
Nobody's making them go. They have three cars on Red Orchard Route, they had towed out the front track. No one made them go through it. No one, when they go to Middletown, you see where they turn around right in the dirt, a lot of them. We are not telling them to go.
Yeah.
So there's no liability to the town. If, if it was something that we created ourselves by, I mean, we've had people rip off their exhaust because we're great, you know, they can, they can file a complaint for that. Mud season, no.
Didn't file after your record?
Uh, no, record would not go there. They said that they're even passable, they would not show up and do it. Unless you're a crime tractor, hold it out a few days later.
Yeah.
I think drivers are getting used to having much more information at their disposal about the condition of roads, whether it's on their phone or on a map, on a sign, on a digital sign. Uh, I think it would be a good idea for us to try to do some kind of temporary sign for those citizens who request it because they think at any given point in time, there's a reason that their road is bad enough that it needs one of these temporary signs.
The one thing I disagree with that is I don't think, probably should leave it up to the individual person, probably should leave it up to the experts that actually, you know, brain the road and everything.
Oh, right, and that's what I meant to call that, thank you for that clarification, Rich, that it would, that, that the individual citizens was called for the attention in the situation to the highway crew, to the highway committee, and that we could make up our mind about a temporary sign.
To have Danny with a pair of signs.
On an individual situation.
To have Danny with a pair of signs that say passage along the rescue, I don't know how to follow. Do you think something is bad, they'll use it, use it, if not, are they just like, which you move on?
Bill? That's what we do, that's what Danny's job is. That's what we do now. Everything you're talking about, just your last couple of months, that's what we do now.
The sign up that says pass at your own risk?
No, if, if the road is bad enough, it has to be closed, we close it. But you can go, did, did a lot of people use Middletown Road with big trucks? Big pickup trucks? Yeah. They want to get up and down too. We're not closing the road. So people, people go down it, but you know, when you, when you come to the end of the bell, Burgess Cemetery or Gordon, you look at the trees and looking, you got a cliff and there's no road and you drive over, you're not going to do anything to stop that person from driving over. I don't care what kind of sign.
I know.
Okay, and that's what happens. I mean, it's, we, we live in the country and Danny and his crew do a really good job with that.
I don't wonder if it'd be more liable if you were putting a sign up, admitting that your road's so bad that someone couldn't get through it.
I think if you say pass at your own risk, you're telling them it's passable?
I mean, I mean, I've lived here forty-five years, I've been through forty-five mud seasons, I've served on the board seven to eighteen years, and I've never, I've never dealt with, nobody's ever come in and talked about, you, it's part of, it's part of living on a dirt road, sorry. That's what you have to deal with. That's how I feel, personally. If you don't, then move on to a power road or do something else.
There's nobody for the other roads, for two men, five or six roads that are worse than Middletown.
And nobody from them roads can then ask us to, to close it down or have one way or,
or no through traffic, none of them.
Okay? You have anything else on the highway?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to do any action? Yeah, the board wants to take any action?
Because my thought is, I know we do this with the fire department and this rescue, if there's wires down or trees down or it's a dangerous situation, the truck's out there to close that road. And if you've got the mud season, if it's dangerous situation for the persons in their car, it should be closed.
You're going to close it?
Temporarily closed.
You put a road close sign up, you want to be, then you are taking responsibility.
That's, yeah, if it's an odd emergency, you're.
Everything that goes on, I'm handling a whole bunch of.
Emergency season, we didn't want that.
Mud season is not an emergency, it's a season in Vermont. You put a road close sign up, you better make sure everybody's notified because you are taking ownership of what happens in that.
Right. It could be a medical or a fire emergency that.
Exactly.
We have to get to it regardless. I would get there.
we get there or when we get there.
But you're gonna keep a man from going home that could take his four wheel drive, pick up truck and drive up there because you say the road's closed?
For that four wheel drive, I wanna go, you want to go?
No, no, you're saying the road's closed. Yeah. Why don't you say the road's closed and can't drive?
What is the recommendation of the highway committee? If we need to have a motion, I think it needs to come from the highway committee.
Well, my recommendation is that we leave it the way it is and let any handling in this discretion when something comes up, as it has, as we've done in the past.
And if he thinks he needs to order a couple sandwich signs or whatever, fine. If he thinks he has some up there, fine.
I could go along with that if that's part of the motion.
I think it has to be.
So you're making the motion?
No, sorry. Well, did you make a motion?
No, I didn't.
I'll make the motion that we're gonna leave it up to the discretion of the highway board.
So do you want me to order?
No, no, no more. They're pure discretion.
I can't put them up if I don't have one.
So pure discretion. You think you need some, you come to the board, you ask if you don't, you don't.
Well, I think if you're gonna do that, I think you ought to just make the motion and put right in there to the town's own.
I think.
Force on.
Sure, sure.
How many do you want?
I would do four.
Well, I was gonna say, just again, if it's a pure road, we may use two to a road. So that one's signed on it.
That counts great. So the motion now has the signs in it?
Yeah, what he said.
Second?
All seconded.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. I'm opposed. Okay. Anybody else? That's it?
Yeah.
Is it, we have?
I impeded yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm ready to move.
So I'm just one opposed. Okay. So it's 41. You got the motion though?
I do.
Okay, good. Let's move on?
No, none of that.
You got, we got something else.
One more. This has to do with Patrick Kuhlberg and the damage that he sustained during the last flood, which was in office, the building, to his walls and back of his house. Richard and myself met with him Saturday and went over his concerns that he had, and has had since 2003 or four up there. And he has been to numerous board meetings and no action has ever been taken at any little meetings to help him solve some of the problems that were fixed by engineers that he said would not work. And proof is there, they didn't work because they kept washing him out every time. And so we talked to him about it and that fixing his washouts all the time is a major mitigation. And I don't know what the answer is to that and I don't know if anybody else has an answer to it. Because when they engineered it in 2003 or four, they diverted all the water from the fire pond and Hinckley Brook onto the Hinckley Brook, all of it. It solved the problems mostly on the fire pond, but it created problems for Patrick and everybody downstream from there. So every time we got a lot of rain and washed the stone wall out, Darky's stone wall too. We got a grant that would help him repair one, I think he got three locations that are washed out or two, but we repaired one location and that's the location that if the water comes down again, could take out the corner of his house. So they will give us a grant, I forget the amount was, $11,000, $12,000, of which Pat has to pay 25% of that, which his share would be $3,000 of the others. What Pat would like the town to do is to help him with that 25%. The major mitigation is something of another topic that I think the board should start discussing because it's getting worse in that since they started logging at the park, we're getting more water down there. And it showed all, ever since they started logging, it's kept showing the more water. It created a pond in back of the church. The pond overflowed, went down the emergency walkway to the church and down the road and went right towards, what else, the chapel. John Barton. Which I don't know, might have not, but it went there, which hadn't been doing that. But you look, you'll see more water, I don't know if it's in the laws or whatever happened up there, it's diverted water more down this way or not. And when they go up and fix it, maybe they'll stop it. I haven't been up there, so I don't know what is that. But I know more water's coming towards Patrick and people below there. So that is a big concern and every time he's washed out, he has come to the board, the different boards, and expressed his desire to have something done. And he has been ignored in every one of, and even this one. So I think we should start doing something if we can to try and help him out on that. But his primary right now is the small washout of the stone wall. So what he's asking for is help on that. Did I miss anything, Pat? No, that's accurate.
Would you like to speak on your behalf or answer, John?
No, I think John described the situation accurately. But Pat is sorry, asking for help. Simple, in fact, it's quite simple.
And one thing you said Saturday when we were talking to you that stuck at me a little bit, you said, even at the time when the engineers were out and proposed their fix, you were arguing at that point, that's not gonna work, that's not.
In 2003 and 2004, there were several letters to the town about the engineering culvert that crosses Fire Pond, Hinckley Brook, and then goes behind my bar. It was, in fact, Harry, the galten one of the house in 2003, fire S V C or S V E, the engineering term that has been used from time to time by the town. And they all agreed that the solution that were up there were not, were not going to work. And the size of the various culverts was pointed out, the fact that the culvert functioned directly in the bar at his house is a terrible idea and has been probably for as long as those properties have been sitting there. And so there were attempts to mitigate it through Ty and Bond who came up with the energy dissipator ideas that, in the letters that I sent, I believed it was never going to work. I've said it a million times, but I'm no engineer, I'm simply the person standing there up to my knees and watering the snow. So, so yeah, I mean, effectively in my mind, in 2003, we, we mean, Harry and I put the town on notice that we believed this was not going to work. And everybody said, well, you know, we're gonna do what we want to do. So Ty and Bond won that battle and I believe they were wrong and that, like John said, if you go up there, you can see how wrong it is. So, so yeah, there's responsibility there as far as I'm concerned.
One other thing, Pat, is the town caused their problem.
Yes, yeah.
They did it. Like the old boy engineer, this is the fix for the water. But they didn't say it could wash out all the people down below at the same time.
Yeah, the Ty and Bond study, I believe we stopped at the bottom of Fire Pond Road, which was a huge mistake. Why that engineering study wasn't comprehensive and looked at where that water was going to end up in the Hinckley Brook behind my barn, pointing right at Barrett's house, heading down to the Middletown Road Bridge. And the Middletown Road Bridge had been replaced three times in the past 25 years. That's a really bad track record. And so that's cost the town some significant money. And the other point I would make is that in 96, FEMA came through and did all those repairs. So FEMA was in there attempting, so there's a track record of FEMA and the town taking responsibility for that. And so it's a sort of narrative precedent that the town has, has taken responsibility in the past as well.
Well, I think there's greater danger too, is that because of the requirement that we need to put bigger culverts up on Hinckley Brook as we go up, that allows more water to come down faster. And you're putting more water from these larger culverts into a smaller culvert or to a smaller area when it gets down to where you live and Darky lives. So I think you're gonna have worse problems. And the town, and the town is looking forward to see whether or not we can get some mitigation of this stuff. But so far, you know, we don't know what we're doing.
The mitigation that was done on those culverts, the three culverts, the one by my house, the one, the next one up, so there's 1117, 11, you know, 57, 11 and 17, those culverts that have been changed have really saved, showed that those big culverts really work. We probably saved in this last storm, if it were similar to Irene and to some extended bust, we'd probably save $300,000 because we didn't have to rebuild the road. It didn't take out the road from my house all the way to the corner, you know, so, I don't know, 300 yards of road, tenth of a mile of road. And so we, so we save $200,000 or $300,000, but we're saving $200,000 or $300,000 because we're sending more, we are keeping the water off the road, which slowed it down before, but now it gets to the bottom faster.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I talked to the state, I talked to FEMA privately, you know, just without mentioning anything specific, but talking about the hydraulics and hydrology that we have to follow to make our roads. And I said, you are making us make our, our culverts bigger to save our roads, but what are you doing to people living along the, along the brook all the way down below it? And there's absolute silence. They don't want to take on that other than some of them like it because then they can get people to move away from the water, you know. But, but this has been going on since 98, when I first worked with FEMA, I had the same discussion at that time. What are you gonna, you are requiring all these widening and to allow for more water to come down here, but when you get to a village, what do you do with the village? Are you gonna make them tear the village out? Are you gonna move the village to the top of the mountain? Is that your mitigation? And they said, well, we can't afford that. And I said, well, you're, what you're doing is you're driving them out by sending more water down there and not allowing them to even raise the size of the river to keep it within the village, to keep the water from destroying the town. So they don't want to deal with, they don't want to deal with it at all. A mitigation project right now by 44 CFR, we can't mitigate anything on his property or Dottie's property, that's private property. That isn't even, that isn't even within any of the, within any of the language of the, of the act that allows for that. So there's nothing we can do in mitigation. The only thing we can do is, is to try to get the state to understand that they have some responsibility when they make us protect our roads by destroying our towns. And I don't know, I don't know any other way to put it, but none of them want to talk about it. And I'm talking with BEM, the head, the head of recovery for BEM, they don't want to talk about it. So I don't know what we can do. I'm sorry that NRCS didn't find that we could do anything for Dottie because it's not close enough to her house, to the house itself, the structure itself, that's what they're looking for. But I think the town needs to hire a different engineer and, and look at the water that comes down through there and see, John and I have been talking about, Fire Pond Road doesn't have to go into Hinckley Brook on, on, on the uphill side of your house. It could go past the church, it could go past the white church or maybe past between Alfred's and the white church and go way to the river down below. It doesn't need to go anywhere it goes. Some of it right now is right in front of the, the walkway to the back door of the brick church and that's a two foot culvert that goes over into Hinckley Brook on the back. But that doesn't carry all that water that comes down in Fire Pond, most of that water in Fire Pond goes right over to Patrick's. The other thing is halfway down Fire Pond, there's another two foot culvert, well, there's another open culvert, but it goes into a two foot culvert that comes across right at those, that little red building garage and Airbnb that is at Barrett's old house, that goes right across, so that's another two foot culvert. So everything draining up at Rob Hall's comes down and goes into Hinckley Brook from right at the fire pond, right at the top of the hill, that comes, that little creek that comes just before my house. Then it goes down further and it comes down again in a two foot culvert, then it comes down again, comes across and it crashes into Dottie's house because that's the way they designed it. All of that water, every bit of that water could come down and go through the village and not even come down this way. Either that or you gotta make the opening bigger and then this little white house here across, it might case, couldn't go right through the shit living. So there is a real problem, somebody needs to study and fix it. And I don't know when, but somebody needs to study and fix it.
John, first of all, I want to say how much I appreciate the fact that you and Rich visited with Patrick and analyzed the situation. What conclusion did you, the two of you reach in terms of what we can do to help Patrick? I think that's one of the things you said, if I heard you correctly.
The one thing you can do to help Patrick is to pay his 25% of that grant. And I don't have the exact figures, but I will build with it.
His share is 2,900.
2,900.
And that's, so that's 20%, so what is 80%? Somewhere around 8,000 something.
So it's $3,000 roughly is his share. And that's what he would like, tell, pump it down, Santa's its town doing damage. And has done the damage three, four drives.
So is that something you would like to recommend?
I said, no, yes.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. The, the problem I see is much like the sign discussion we just had, I mean, more properties are in the same situation, similarly to this, just saying that. That's the precedence that we're setting. And I think we were in agreement that even though this is a fix, it's a band aid fix.
I think that.
Like the worst way is in the springtime.
I think the town needs to, I think those, those, somewhere here, I think the town needs to hire an engineer and to study this whole issue because it's only gonna come up again and again and again. And get somebody to give us some recommendation of what can be done, if anything can be done. And then try to go to the state or the feds and see if you can't get some new for that. That would be.
Yeah, I think we pretty much just thought with the same thing, get some kind of consensual plan and, for lack of a better word, wait for the next flood and hopefully some money comes in.
Right.
John, I just want to share that the white church, as you call it, a graphic community church, has had tremendous water infiltration problems. I've worked there for more than five years and we had to hire an engineer ourselves through preservation trust in Vermont. The church is gonna have, pay 50% and preservation trust is gonna pay 50%. And that's just for the study to figure out how on earth to stop the water taking out the foundation of the church. It's a constant, I live in a very moist environment over there, so this, Patrick's absolutely right, this is, it's constant. Danny came and looked at the problem too and one of the ways we have to handle the water is to create a perimeter drain, but then you have to send it into a culvert. Again, the culvert house is probably too small to handle the water. I think an engineering study's a super idea.
If we let that go about this, which is very little, but maybe nothing can be done. I mean, maybe it's such a big astronomical fix to mitigate it. I mean, what are we talking, like something like that, you know, like you see in the Los Angeles? Yeah. I mean, I don't know, I'm being facetious, but maybe there's really a lot of hecking what the candy done around here without an engineering study, we're not gonna find out.
I wonder how much an engineering study.
Yeah, is there something you want to say? Well, okay, guess it.
Like something like that, you know, like you see in the Los Angeles, I mean, I don't know, I'm being facetious, but maybe there's really a lot, hecking what, it can't be done around here, without an engineering study, we're not going to find out.
I wonder how much an engineering study...
Yeah, is there something you want to say? Well, okay, guess it. And I'm not advocating this at all, but FEMA has another solution that I don't want to talk about, and they might mitigate this, and that is buy everybody out and tear everything down. That is their, that's the way they get rid of the problem. Okay, I just, because somebody is going to bring that up at some time, I don't think it's a great solution, I think that is a leaky, but that's what they're looking at. When they look at the cost benefit of building something, a big structure versus removing the, the problem, they're going to come up with something, so.
Has FEMA gone on the record that, was that a recommendation?
Say again?
Has FEMA gone on the record?
They haven't, look at it, they won't, they don't even want to bother with it, they don't want to talk.
Okay, I, I might not have heard you correctly, I thought, I heard you say the FEMA solution that you've talked to them about...
No.
Is...
FEMA's solution to a problem that you have where there's constant flooding is to do what we did with the craving, what we did with the houses along the, you line up the thing, make it apart.
That's, that's their modus operandi, you mean?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That was a town, that was a town, that was a middle town, wasn't down here because of the water.
That's an excellent point, can't we say it's all a town?
And then you build these ditches like around the church to go into the river.
But you know, can't they why they do some, yeah, down here? Because they couldn't make a living up there, and they want down here because of the rivers, and they fulfill, yeah, they have no power, change, they can survive, they can make a living.
They need to the water before the water became the problem.
I'm, 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 I'm going to be very clear around what we're recommending. First, I'm hearing that we may need to help Patrick with his 25%, and now I'm hearing a bigger solution that we get an engineering study? Where are we? Could you clarify where we are, John, please?
I think you have to, I think, Suzanne, the engineering study is a side, I think the issue is Patrick.
Okay, good.
Whether the town does, that's, that's for another day.
Right.
But right now, we have to deal with, with what we have, the problem with Patrick.
And, and it sounds like the church has a similar problem.
I, I will say this, though, don't just fix Patrick and then forget about the whole problem.
No, no.
You need to hire, to relate it, you're going to have to hire an engineer to turn out what the heck you're going to do.
We need to do that, but, but the issue is...
It's for another day, but it's not, it's not for three years.
No, 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 but the issue is Patrick's situation, I think, and that's what, Ken, you have a...
Yeah, I was just wondering, have you already here, since they're like a dollar month, that you've actually had to put in to repair things that, that people can at least, if they ask you, you've done it, you've done what you've been due.
Well, sure, I mean, in 96, Harry paid somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 to fix that wall. And then in, in, after, in 2003, there was another $4,000 spent, and then another $4,000 after Harry. So, so that's that, and I think if you drive around up those roads and look back down up the brick, you'll know that I spent most of my summer trying to keep the walls from falling down. So it's, it's been a lifetime of struggle, so a lot of money's been spent up there. I mean, so, so I, I feel like, yes, I have a lot of skin in the game, so to speak, I keep burying money out, and, and I'm trying to maintain the culvert behind my barn, but the town doesn't really maintain it. So, and that's another issue that, that I feel is involved here, so. So yeah, this is a very narrow request, because it's, the narrower request is about this grant, which is limited to one project. I wasn't the one who brought that, that up, I mean, I think the town submitted seven or more projects, and so, and in my role, yeah, I wish every one of those seven or nine people got, got something from this grant. But as a matter of fact, because I am apparently the only house that's, you know, the brick is not closer to my kitchen than I am to build right now, and that's because of that star, and that's very narrow, and that's why the grant was, was given. And so the narrow question is that little bit of my 25%, and I'm simply asking for help with that. And that's the narrow conversation that's on the table. The bigger issue of the mitigation plan, I have a million comments about it, and I, and I think that they're all on the right path, but it's like, yes, it's so monstrous, it's so big, it's epic, and so, and about the future of the town in so many ways, yeah, if the solution is that Dottie's house and my house and, and all the houses all the way down Hinkley Brook to the river disappear one day, is that, is that the vision for the future of the town? And we talked about development of the town, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, I have an opinion on it. But it's a mess, and, and we struggle along, that's what we do.
So what I think I'm hearing, being said, is that the Highway Committee is asking the Select Board to cover the 25% for the town, to approve the town covering the 25% that's associated with the specific grant that Patrick received from the state. Is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you're, you're not going to make me the most, but yes.
I'm just trying to, is that what you're saying, John?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I just want everybody to realize that this is a Band-Aid fix.
What do you mean by that?
It's going to happen again.
It's going to happen again.
It's going to happen again.
Unless you can do something with major mitigation, Patrick.
That is, okay.
And so that happens, that's going to watch out, give.
And I think that's, that's where the responsibility of this board is, whether, whether we approve it or don't approve it for Patrick, it is going to happen again. And I recommend that the board look into hiring an engineering firm to take a look at this whole situation, so that it doesn't happen again. How it's going to get fixed, who knows? But at least we need to look at it and don't bury our heads in the sand and say, well, Patrick's is going to be fixed, Dottie can fix hers, it's going to happen again, unless something happens, I don't know what that is, but something has to happen.
But it is also a well-known out fix, so it's not, you know, it's a Band-Aid, but it's a, it's a good, it's the best we can do, right? And so, and it's going to protect me from falling into the river one night, so.
Right. I'm going to move outside and find the wrong protection.
Well, someone want to make a motion?
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
I was going to make a motion for the town to, to the 25% towards Cooperland's grant for town, is that?
Do we have a second for that?
No.
Can I alter? Since we don't have in front of us, if you mean by that to take, to pay Patrick's share, let's just say in the motion that we pay Patrick's share of the NRCS grant for the repair of the wall at his house, and then, because it's all, it's set in the contract, which you guys have all signed, and Barbie said they're going to pay the 25, 29% of that, but you said you were going to pay that, but that's the way it's done, and, and the private property owner then reimburses the town generally. So, but let's just say that we pay that, the homeowner's share of that grant, okay?
We've already agreed to it, we really once.
Yeah. Okay.
Does it need to be said, does it need to be said that the main reason why we're doing this is because the town's taking some responsibility? I'm just a little bit concerned that every time someone, someone's flooded now, they're going to come to the Select Board for some kind of a...
You know, I'm not sure about that, but what I'd like to see in this motion is something that says that the town will investigate, so that it, it doesn't fall through the cracks.
I think that's fair.
I mean, you're not going to be obligated to do it, but, I mean, to pay anything, but let's, as, as paying the 29, the 25% share, and, but we're also going to look into the course, or however you want to have it, so that it becomes an obligation of the board to continue to look and then to make a decision, once we understand that.
Would that follow the, the board or the plan of the... Is that the board? I, I think that's fair.
So that it is, so it doesn't fall through the cracks again.
This is what I've written. The town paid the homeowner's share of the NICS grant for Patrick, I played, for, and the town will investigate a permanent solution of the problem of water runoff at, at this site.
Perfect.
Or I can make that at Fire Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In Hinkley Brook, in Martin. Main Street, Little Town.
So, that's it, you can have...
Do we have, you have a second here?
No.
I think Rich seconded it, didn't he?
No, Kathy made it, no, no second.
I don't have a second.
Thank you, John.
You got it? Second, Rich, okay.
You did a second one?
Sure. Don't get right into it.
Do we have any more discussion on, on motion, presented by Rick, by, if not, I think a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Okay.
So I'd like to comment that I'm really heartened by the attitude of the board in dealing with this and helping me out, so thank you.
Well, sorry, I can't see that.
Okay, move on, Personnel, the Parks Committee, Suzanne, I sent you, you got this right, okay. Where the, the, there was a request from the, the committee that we, the town proceed to start work on the parking lot area for, that was created last year. And I spoke to Danny, and Danny said, we, we can do that, but we can't do it, like, we should not do it until they're completely out of there, because there's still timber up there, and they have to come back in sometimes during the dry season and, and work on the trails that they've damaged, and do whatever else they have to do as part of their contract. So Danny said that they'll get it done, but it has to be done on a schedule that meets the town's schedule, and we just can't spend, you know, three days, four days and neglect the town. And there is, after logging, there's $17,530.51 will be in the account that is used for the built park. That doesn't include any grants or anything else, so we can spend a certain amount of that money to do the parking area, but you certainly can't spend it all, because then you'll have no more money for future to do any more, you know, maintenance on the park. The Park Committee is also filing for another grant. Was it, what was the grant, the ERSI grant?
RT, RT, yeah.
So if they get that, I think, I'm not sure whether it was $35,000 or $15,000, it was depending on the pavilion. So if they get the $30,000, then, then a lot of that, some of that money could go into, I believe, the parking area, and we would have, we wouldn't have to touch much of the $17,000 left, and could be used for future additions or rehabilitation to the park. So it doesn't fall into the pair like it did for the last 50 years. So that's about what I was saying for Park Committee.
I think the committee or somebody should walk up there and see if they can determine where that water's going to go.
I agree, John, that is a concerning, that's a big concern.
Yeah, let's, we'll talk to Alan and Mike Fields and let them give us a report. Good idea, thanks.
Thanks for that.
Personnel?
Yeah, last Select Board meeting, I guess, with discussion on the grievance and the policy, and we did vote on not doing the training. So you asked us to amend that section, the town draft and personnel policy and Addendum C grievance process. So if you look at number two, we did take out where it had mentioned Select Board members would be committed to doing the training, and replaced it with harassment and discrimination training is optional for any member of the board or employee if requested. I'm just, would like to make the motion to change it to that. And we can have a discussion, second.
Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor of the change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And just for FYI, the end of April, we'll do our first quarterly reviews of Bill and Danny, and then at some point, we want to meet with Michelle and Kim, make a date to look at the content and overtime as compared, and compare it to last year. We said we were going to do this for the year, just to see how best we can use.
Building Committee? Building Committee, who's the Building Committee? Today, we posted on the website, on the announcements, but it's also announcements, bids and invitations to bid. We posted the bid, two bids, one for the lift elevator, one for the construction of all the other things other than the elevator, which includes work on the stairways here, making the bathroom ADA compliant, and those two bids are on, are there on, on the website, but more importantly, they were sent out by the architect in, the RTRW, Architect Company. They sent it out today with our website being the place where they can go to look at the particulars of the bids. The bids are, the packages are about 200 pages, and most of that is stuff that is in every bid that goes out, but, but it does go into, into what they need to bid on, and, and the details of that. They're sending it to all the contractors and including single persons who are LICE, who are insured income, who could do the framing for the, for the elevator, because you don't need a big firm to do that, and, and to the, to the elevator companies that were around, including the one that has given us a lot of advice from Montpelier, and they, I can never remember the name, it is an April, but it's, it's, it's not Avon, but it's something like that, out of, out of Montpelier. They've come highly recommended by everybody who has lift elevators in the area, because if you ever had a problem with Otis or any of those people not coming when they said or not really doing the job, these people are really, really good, it's a family-owned business, and they're out of Montpelier, and, anyway, I'm, I'm pulling for them, but I don't know how the bids are going to go, and I don't know what elevator they, what brand they sell, but, so those, those bids are all out. Tomorrow morning at, going to get this wrong, at 9:00 AM, Remount Power is going to come look at the sites over here where these transformers are in the lawn, and are going to stake out where they're going to put the single-phase transformer, or improvement of the amperage into this building to 200 from 100 amps, and kind of figure out where we're going to put with, put the underground wires into this building. The, just so you know, the electrical service that now comes into this wall will all be cut off, it'll come in this wall where it used to come in a long time ago, apparently, and will be increased to 200 amps, except for whatever runs off the generator, and that'll be limited to 100 amps, because that's the size of generator that they have now, and they're going to improve that generator, but it will still be 100 amps, they're going to improve it by replacing the motor, that's when the foundation... That's when the foundation's doing. So we should have all the electricity, have all the wiring, background wiring done for the lift elevator very quickly once, once Green Mountain Power gets the, gets their transformer in. That work, all of that work is separate from the bid that went out today. That's going to be done by local, Lawrence and Mulberg, Lawrence and Mulberg is it called? Yes. Lawrence and Mulberg and Green Mountain Power are going to do the, all the electrical work. And then whoever hooks up the elevator, just going to be Matt or basically twisting wires and opening it up. But we hope that it's going to be all local people if they are not so busy that they can't. What about the heat pumps? Don't know anything about heat pumps. I keep asking and I don't know what the matter is.
Well, Bill, did we ever get in touch because Gus has to do the disconnects before he even asked, asked one to come back?
Yeah, he has, Brent has not gotten back to me. I asked him about that last week and I haven't heard back from Brent yet.
Ask him about what?
About electrical work that needs to be done before he can come back.
Well, Gus knows what the electrical work has to be done. It's Gus, he's waiting for Gus to do his part.
I asked him that and I haven't heard back from him that that is actually the problem because he, I don't think he's gotten the other heat pumps in yet.
No, Gus has gotten the second one and he said he couldn't put them in anyways until Gus put the disconnects because he thought the disconnect was there.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check with him. I asked him that question to be sure that that was the issue and he hasn't gotten back to it. So as soon as I've been off top with Gus, but.
Yeah, well, last week I told him.
Okay. Anything else, any questions on the...
Tell me. Tell me. Tell us. Tell us about the foundation about the generator. Any changes within a new generator?
That discussion really has come up, except that just as an aside, it was suggested that maybe we would be asked to share the cost of replacing the engine, but I think Joe and I are thinking that they're never going to ask us. Yeah, I met with Bob Donald and he keeped not indicating about anything. Called and came over to me and asked, asked me if the board would, would want to partake. And I said, I don't know, I'll bring it up, but I haven't heard anything from Bob Donald, so I don't know what idiot final it's going to be. And I did, I did meet with Bob Donald as well because when Lisa Lantowski was here, she promised to give us $20,000 towards the handicap accessibility of the building. And she said, I'll give you $10,000 now, which we got. And she said, when you get it done, I'll give you another $10,000. And I reminded Bob about that, but I haven't heard anything back, so I don't know what best fits. Okay, anything else? Nothing there? Waste Water Committee, there's nothing. It's, it's still in the hands of, of Lele, so that's.
I just wrote to him like Thursday.
I know.
I haven't been working.
We were talking once a week and she said they're working on it, so that's where it is.
Doug?
Yes?
I did ask Bill about where we stood with the school and their water system and it's kind of just dropped, things been dropped.
Right.
Gary did talk to Michelle, Michelle asked him today. Gary's waiting for state. They've done nothing different at the school. They're tearing on like they were a year ago and they've heard nothing in the state's hands, so I don't know if they need a little closer to find out what's going on with their water.
Well, Lele did say something to us that she had urged us to apply for a water study. She said, because the state is still studying what to do with the Grafton School. And that was about three months ago, I think, or two months ago. Remember she, when we met with them?
Well, yeah, they're adding the, to this, this study that's going on.
Yeah.
She convinced them to add a short paragraph on including the water study.
Right.
Along with the sewer study.
Right.
Because there's money, and that money will all be covered in the $97,000.
So if we have to do that, there's, there's money to do a study. But it's still, it's still in the state's hands and I don't know what, you know, that was a couple, that was a month or so, month and a half ago, so. I guess, I mean, that's not really our kind of responsibility, it's just, it's really the school, the gas. I don't know how, how much we have overlap, I mean, with the school.
It's, it's their issue.
Yeah, that's what I think, so.
That's what the lease is, so.
Right, but the reason I brought it up is, we were talking, Kim and I were talking and we're just curious to see where that stood.
Right, yeah. You were asking and Gary said it's, it's still in the spin, still in the state.
Any other business other than the, the school water?
Do you want to, what happened today with, with the school is, we got, two weeks ago, we, the Agency of Education agreed with us that a lease is good enough, we don't have to give them title, they don't have to have title in order to get the asset branch to fix the school. And Larry Slayson wrote back today and outlined what the lease should look at, look like. And I sent that to the superintendent and Jack and to the attorney for the school. I didn't hear it from anybody but Andy Haas, the superintendent, and he says, this is exactly what the state says we needed and we should go for it. And, and then he wrote Sean with a question mark, Sean's the attorney, Sean, question mark. Haven't heard from anybody else. Then later this afternoon, at 3:00, Larry Slayson sent a, what could be the lease amendment, changing the term of it from a year-to-year to a 55-year lease, beginning at that April 8, 2019 date, which is when it was signed the lease, 55 years, so that we're more than 50 years from today. And that it would then be, have a five-year continuance on. But the only thing he's changing is the term. He's not changing anything that has, that says anything like further on and says, if that isn't a school for the kids of Grafton, it comes back to the, if they're out of there and it comes back, the lease ends and it comes back to us. So the kids at the school, that building has to use primarily for the education of the Grafton kids. And if that stops happening, it comes back to us.
Is it specifically safe for the kids who are heading school business? Is it?
No, that's an education for the kids of Graft. No, we're really clear about it because we don't want them to store desks and broken down buses over there.
And, and we did also find out that the Select Board and the school board have the ability to negotiate the lease without going through an actual whole town, special town meeting. So that was, that was a really nice surprise.
And what about the 99, the reading that I've been doing, said 99?
That, that lease, that lease number, it was a 99-year lease and I'm not sure what happened in between because the lease we presented was signed that night. We must have done some negotiation and that between us and the school before, I mean, in between time, but anyway, at the meeting, it was, there was a motion to, to change that article to allow for the terms to be negotiated after the town meeting, negotiated between the school board and the, the town Select Board as to the terms of the lease. And because we did that accidentally today, we don't have to go to a town meeting because that authority to negotiate the lease has never been withdrawn and therefore we, the town has it and the school still has it. Now, whether the school board attorney agrees with that or not, that, that's up in the air, so. Right, but it looks, right now it looks good that we don't, neither the town, we don't have to have a, a meeting and at their, at their district school meeting, which they need anywhere, I think, they don't have to have that as an article, they can handle it before that meeting.
Okay. I just thought I read that the state is requiring a 99-year lease. Okay, well, you're much more deep in the details of it than I am and I just wanted to raise that question. Thank you.
So you said for the education of the Grafton children?
Yes.
If it so happened, if the Grafton children were tuitioned and not sent to that school building, does that terminate the lease?
Probably. I mean, it doesn't terminate the lease. You terminate the lease. It is a condition that grants you full authority to terminate the lease. You never have to terminate it, but it's the grounds for terminating the lease without, there's two grounds for terminating the lease, the school and you agree that you don't want the lease anymore. And, or, and that will probably take a town meeting on both sides.
So that is a gravity?
Well, no, no, school and, and school and, and Grafton. Grafton owns the building. Whoever is the, whoever is running that school is the lessy.
Which would be Grafton Athens.
Because, because when, when that lease was signed, it was, if you remember, we were in a joint contract. There was a Grafton School District and that who is the, that's who leased that building for the town.
Right.
The Grafton School District and any successor, any successor district. That successor district became Westminster Athens and Grafton. And now, now the successor district will, at some point this summer, become the Graft, Grafton and Athens School District.
Basically, that's where it was.
Yeah, no, not at all. Don't even think of it that way. No, because, because all we had to do before is go to the Grafton School District. There is no Grafton School District. There is no Athens School District. There's a Grafton Athens School District. Don't think of it the same way. That was a joint contract.
Yes.
Between two school districts. Okay, that, that doesn't exist anymore.
It will fall in 100%.
Okay, so if you want something to do, you have to get Grafton board members and, and Athens board members to agree that, you know, vote whatever it would be, three to two, that if something happens, but you have, you have Grafton voting on it as well as, as, as Athens voting, voting on it as well.
So now you're saying just Grafton can make all the decisions if it so chooses?
On, on, if they're not using for the school, we're the lessor, we can say the lease is done.
It's still, it's still like the joint, but it's not being called a joint anymore because that has to, that had to go away once we've merged with Westminster and you can't ever go back to a joint contract.
But, but the reason.
Because we are now a district, we're not a joint contract.
But the reason we could buy it from them and lease it back to them easily was that we were only dealing with Grafton board members. We weren't dealing with the, the joint.
With the larger.
With the, we weren't dealing with the contract. We were dealing, no, we were dealing just Grafton School Board.
Correct, because back then it was the Grafton School Board, the Athens School Board and the Supervisory Union.
No, it used to be, it used to be the Grafton School Board had a school here.
Yeah.
Athens had a school over there. They decided to sign a contract. They didn't join as a district. They signed a contract.
Right.
To run the schools partly in Athens at that time and partly in Grafton. And then it, all ended up all here, but anyway, they had, it was a contract. It had nothing to do with the school district, had nothing to do with any of that. So when we bought that school and leased it back to them, we were dealing just with the Grafton School Board because Athens had nothing to do with this school except under contract.
Okay, that's a good point.
Which is good news.
Yeah.
So that if something ever happened, we retain the possession of the building.
Yes.
Any other business?
I don't know if anybody's heard of the thing, but I did get an email from Real Senate from the Election Division and supposedly the redistricting of our counties has passed everything except the governor's decision. I have not heard it's passed, but that's the last thing, and it sounds like it's going to.
Which, which, when did they decide, Kim?
It sounds like they were siding with what their recommendations were.
That with Chester?
So we would become Windsor, Windham. And that's how they have us listed so far.
We're going to be Chester, Windham, Athens, Grafton.
Yeah.
One, like a standard.
Yeah. And as soon as I find out, or should be sometime this week, Bill said that they'll send us some more information because there's a lot I am going to have to do on the state voting website and changing districts and things when it comes to voters and street things and things like that.
I think that's accurate because I had a meeting with Bill Dinkin on another issue and he said that you have joined with us. So obviously they got their, they got the word, so.
I think how I day was supposed to be the day was, was supposed to go before the governor and I haven't heard anything.
I know, as the gentleman posted, she's got an information session coming up, I think it's this weekend, Friday, I think it is. Alan, but you can look on her site and she'll, but like Kim said, the governor hasn't signed it yet.
Any other business?
No.
If not, motion to adjourn?
What did I vote for?
Do I, do I, the next break is the evening, it's Monday, you don't want to?
Yeah.
It's a few seconds.[1786.13]